Welcome to the January 15, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting. Please silence your cell phones, your pagers, electronic communication devices. Agendas are located on the back of the chambers, on the shelves if you need one. First, we'll call the meeting to order and then a moment of silent reflection in honor of Mr. Aaron Clapkin, our constable. He was 88 years old. He was our constable for 37 years and he passed away December 18th. And then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First, we'll have the review and approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion, please?
So move.
Move by Gary.
Second.
Second by Ron. Any, is there any, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Next, we have recognition of our Honorable Judge Jeff Davis. First, I'd like to say a few words and then we have a picture on behalf of the County Commission to present to Mr. Davis today. I'd like to take a moment to recognize our friend and mentor, Mr. Judge Davis. We as the Pennington County Commission would like to thank you for your service to our state and our county. The impact will be for all of us in our community alive in our hearts forever. We will all miss your humor, your wisdom, and your knowledge. May God bless you, Mr. Davis, in the years to come. If we could, County Commission, we do have a picture to present to Mr. Davis. If we all come down here. Mr. Davis, if you could come up front first, sir?
I was on behalf of the County Commission.
Golf clubs or fishing pole?
That's coming.
When Holly first mentioned it, I've never been very good at self-promotion, I guess, and I said, "No, I don't want anything." And she said, "Well, it'll be small." And I thought, on the other hand, it's a great opportunity for me to be able to thank Pennington County for 40-plus years. I mean, that's, thank you. I appreciate the recognition.
Let's just all crowd in right here. Judge Davis in the middle.
Jeff Davis probably more than anyone else served on the building committee. I'm ashamed. I'm a building committee since 1990. More than anyone else should be recognized for his contributions for that. After the building committee, like this, photo of the 1922 cornerstone laying ceremony for the original courthouse. Personal note for myself, I appreciate all your process, the ever be a project executed anyway, on the building committee served on it, working effort that goes into it.
Awesome.
I love this picture. Most of you can't see it. OSHA weapons around them. On top of that column is a guy, must be his daughter, about five years old, and he's got to be a bit 35 when he put off the drug.
Wow. Mr. Davis, we have, Mr. Davis, we still have Commissioner LaCroix would like to say a few words and then some of our staff and some, maybe some other commissioners.
Go ahead and let them do it. I can be last.
You want to be after them? Okay, Lloyd.
Okay, Judge, one more thing. This is specific to the Sheriff's Office, I guess, but it benefited Pennington County as a whole for, I don't know, 30-plus years. Judge Davis came to the jail every single weekend to help set bombs, get people out of the jail, and to help us in two regards. One, the jail was full enough, free up bed space, but also by doing that, simple paths, like all simple, literally saved the county probably millions of dollars over the year by getting people out of the jail, back on the street, and out of bombs. So you were tireless in doing that. It means a lot to the county, means a lot to the Sheriff's Office. Ryan, I want to just come up and give you a quick little plaque from the Sheriff's Office. So it says, "Presented to Judge Jeff Davis. Thank you for serving the citizens of western South Dakota. You've been a great partner and criminal justice assistant. Gladly maintain a positive relationship with Pennington County. Just to the jail, but also to the Juvenile Services Society. Sheriff Holloway and Judge Davis wanted to put that together. They literally got in the car and drove into the County's election shop to help sell that concept. So you've been very involved in every front with Pennington County."
Thank you, Judge.
Janet Saylor? You're getting roasted.
Getting closer to the door.
Not yet, you've got a few more.
A lot of changes over the years on the building committee, and I know for many years you threatened me that you were going to give me the job done. I think I'm the only treasurer of Dakota that has the Golden Boot Award, and the visions that you had for Pennington County all come true, and I'm glad that I'm glad that I can tell you.
Nice. We have a video from Mike and KJ Peterson. We couldn't have you leave without Mike and KJ.
I don't know if you can hear us yet.
We can hear you.
Can you hear us?
Yep.
Oh, great. Well, congratulations, Jeff.
Thanks, KJ.
We're down here in Texas, now parked, and I'm going to let Mike talk. Retirement thing, it's a good thing, so.
He sent me a picture of the fish, and I know that everything is bigger in Texas.
I'm going to say congratulations too, Cal.
I'm not sure that was two pounders.
He said he sent him a picture of the fish, Mike.
Are you there? Are you there?
Are you there, Mike?
Did we lose the feed?
I think we've lost you. We'll just keep their pictures up, that one will make you smile.
No, Mike, he also sent a picture from the beach.
The Jeff Davis courthouse.
Oh, we missed half your speech, if you'd like to redo it.
We kind of wondered if we were going in and out there.
You were.
I said your smiles were enough to show Mr. Davis. You're out again.
You're in a bad spot.
All right.
For those of you that know Mike, he sent me a picture a week ago in South Carolina on the beach. He was the only guy there, boots, jeans, with the Dog Thunder. Everybody else, sandals.
Mr. Davis, by the smiles on their face, it looks like retirement's done him well, so.
You bet.
We missed those guys, too. They've been awesome for our county as well, so. God bless you guys.
Thanks. Bye-bye.
Do you have, if any other staff members would like to come up, but we do have Lindell Peterson, Commissioner Lindell Peterson, and Commissioner Nancy Troutman in the audience today, if they'd like to say anything.
I'm not sure what year it was that Judge Davis, a long time ago, thanks to him, another gentleman and I got to walk hitch from Fairgrounds to the airport in two days. And I'm not sure what happened after that, but it was under his jurisdiction.
You were my expert, Lindell, in the Dodge Drive case. Somebody had a pump out there with about a six-inch hose, and you thought he maybe used it to tie up the goats that were in his yard, so we all knew where the water was coming from.
I always respected and due respect his practical approach to all problems. While I was a victim of war, I still love the guy.
Nice.
So one of the greatest things that I remember as being a Commissioner is researching history. So much a part of that, and you had all these wonderful pictures. You cared so much for that building, as you did. When we held that, Jeff, you were so important, and getting out of how important it was to preserve it. I, that's one of my things. I will always be very thankful.
Thank you, Ms. Nancy. Staff, is there anyone in the audience that would like to say anything to Mr. Davis today? Barry Tice or?
Holly, you're on my list.
Holly.
Thank you, everyone.
We're not done yet, Mr. Davis.
No.
Commissioner Lloyd LaCroix would like to say, Commissioner Lloyd LaCroix would like to say a few words.
Mr. Davis, you know, I think we've probably got a long history. You've been around for 43 years. I'm sure you met me when I was 16 or 17 years old. But I want to express, you know, today we've heard a lot about how you preserved Pennington County and some of the things that you've done, but you've touched a lot of lives with the job that you've done. In your courthouse, I mean, you've, people come up to you from all walks of life with no structures, not knowing where they're going, and you've helped put some structure into their lives and helped guide them along, and I'm sure there's plenty of them out there that are looking down and saying, "Thank you, Judge Davis, for your consideration and reviewing their evaluations and helping guide them along in their, in their lives." And that's what I'm most proud of you for doing. I've got to see that firsthand when you started out the JDAI Steering Committee with the youth and trying to divert the youth from juvenile detention center, and I know you've done a lot of work in our community to get that done, and for that, I really appreciate it. And I just wanted to express the sincerity from our community that I know there's a lot of people out here who would probably like to shake your hand and give you a hug and say thank you for steering them in the right way, for doing your job, and seeing the compassion, seeing that they're people. And even when they screwed up, probably came back and you guided them some more. And being able to have that vision and move this county into that position to do what they need to do is showing faith in our people. So I just wanted to say thank you for that.
Thank you, Lloyd.
Thank you, Lloyd. Is there any other commissioners that would like to speak on behalf of Judge Davis?
Judge Davis, I just want to say thank you for your 40 years plus service. Thank you for being one of the best judges I've ever seen in Pennington County, and thanks for being my friend for the past 40 years.
Thank you, Ron.
Good.
Well, it's quite an experience. Thanks, everybody. I'm just overwhelmed, so. It's been a good gig. I've enjoyed every minute of it. We'll move on to other things. I'm out of here, you've got a meeting to do.
Yep. Wish you a happy retirement, Judge Davis.
Thanks again.
Thank you. Ms. Holly, the Board of Commissioners use the consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. Ms. Holly, could you go ahead and read the consent?
Can we back up to number six, Madam Chair?
That'd be good. Black Hill Stock Show, Mr. Ron Jeffries.
Didn't take all this time to come down here for nothing, did you?
I thought you were going to do a speech before.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, thank you for giving me a few minutes. So we got kicked off last Friday with ribbon cutting for the start of the Black Hill Stock Show, the 61st Annual. Commissioner Drews was there and spoke some kind words on behalf of the Commission, welcoming everybody to the Black Hill Stock Show. This event started as a project from the Rapid City Chamber of Commerce, and it was a little bitty three-breed cattle show in the Sulee Building. And over time, as facilities have expanded and opportunities have grown, the show has risen up each time and absorbed every bit of space that's been made available from the new Rushmore Plaza Civic Center back in the late '70s to the expansion of Rushmore Hall and an additional expansion of Rushmore Hall. The business of the Black Hill Stock Show is livestock. I mean, that's the nucleus of what makes this event grow every year. We're happy to tell you that the cattle numbers, again, are maxed out. We've grown as much as we can grow in terms of cattle showing at the show, just due to time and space available. That's a great position to be in. We look forward to opportunities to continue to work to grow this great event. I provided each of you the schedule for events coming up throughout. Quite a variety of activities, everything from livestock shows and sales to horse shows and sales, to world's smallest rodeos, to boots and beer, and Black Hill Stock Show stampede concerts. There's a real great variety of events and activities that take place throughout this event. And really, with our Board of Directors and staff, we really look at this as our opportunity to bring people to Rapid City, let them come enjoy a great piece of Western heritage, do business, and then enjoy some of the fun things we have to do in this area. We actually take that part of our mission and do it all year long. Stock Show is our biggest crown jewel when we do this, but we all have, the weekend after the Stock Show's over, we go right back into hosting agricultural-type events at the Pennington County Fairgrounds. We're very proud of the opportunity that you've given Central State's Fair to manage and operate those grounds. It's a, it's a large piece of property, and we appreciate the opportunity to represent this county in providing these types of events and activities. A study that was done about 2012 showed about $22 million of economic activity or economic impact that comes in from the Black Hill Stock Show. This year looks to be a really good year. Cattle numbers are up, horse entries in the first weekend's events are up, the teams competing for ranch rodeo and bronc matches are up, several of them are filled already. Every indicator is that we're going to have a great year. We'd just like to extend an invitation to everybody in Pennington County and the Black Hills area to come out and support this event. A full schedule is available at blackhillstockshow.com, and we'd be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Board, do we have any questions for Mr. Jeffries or any comments?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
Ron, I found it interesting, the other day I was at the, one of the committee meetings over at West River Electric for AGNR, and your gal mentioned that when it comes to the horse sale, I can't remember the numbers exactly, but it looked like we basically doubled what we were selling horses for compared to other stock shows that tried to do the same thing, but we seem to be able to bring better quality stock, I suppose, is what's bringing higher numbers.
So the information that Commissioner DeSanto was referring to is there was an article in Western Horsemen, and Western Horsemen's a publication that's been around over 80 years, going out to horse enthusiasts throughout the United States and beyond, and the article was the guide to stock shows, the 2019 guide to stock shows, and they take those stock shows and lay them out event by event. In the middle of that, we're the fifth in chronological order for stock shows, we're about the fourth-largest reporting stock shows in terms of attendance, but the, part of the two articles that highlighted the Black Hill Stock Show, one of them talked about our horse sale. And our horse sale about seven years ago was running about $350,000 in sale, in the sale total, and over the next few years, through the leadership of one of our board members, Dean Johnson, another one, Tom Coolahan, and our horse sale committee, which now includes Jim Hunt and John Johnson and Lynn Weishaw and several other volunteers, has grown that sale into a $1.4 million sale. And so in seven years, it's, it's just exploded. And that interest, that horse-level interest, is now something that's recognized on a national level. The numbers that Commissioner DeSanto was referring to is they compared us with Fort Worth and Denver, and our sale average blew those two entities away. Texas with the most horses in the entire nation, and then Denver, Western National, which would represent our region in terms of areas that you could travel to to find horse flesh. And Rapid City led the way, so we're very proud of the job they've done. Thank you.
Commissioner Drews, please.
Ron, first of all, appreciated the shout-out the other night for the Pennington County Commission, for the partnership that we have. And I know that you do have some staff there, but a lot of this work is done by volunteers, and in fact, things like this wouldn't happen without those volunteers, and you've got a great group out there, and we, we really appreciate the work that they put into it, too. Thank you.
You're absolutely right. So we have just six office people to produce over 100 events during this, during this run, so there's absolutely no way that we would get this done based on our staff. We'll swell to around, around 200 active people participating in this event, and a number of those, including our entire Board of Directors, are an all-volunteer basis. And that's, that's where we get, the horse sale, for example, we have people that have 40, 50 years of horse flesh experience come in to serve on that committee. If we were out trying to buy that kind of talent or hire that kind of talent, the profitability of the event would dwindle drastically. It's strictly because we have the great volunteer support that we have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Ms. Troutman or Mr. Lindell Peterson, any comments on the opening of the Black Hill Stock Show? Come on up, Lindell. I'm sure you have a joke for us. I'm teasing. Thank you. How many years have you been in a participant in the Black Hill Stock Show and, and helping out, Lindell?
Quite a while.
Can I tell one quick story about Lindell?
So we were going to build a new arena behind the office. It's called the Rounds Arena, and Lindell and Dick Bray were going to build this arena. So they went out and had a post hole digger and started drilling holes to put posts for this arena. After about the 12th hole, the digger quit. So Lindell and Dick Bray hand dug all the holes all the way around that arena to set that arena.
Wow.
Quite, 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 quite an effort.
Well, we have some more holes for you to dig. I'm kidding.
Actually, the, where that arena is now was the garden for the County Pork Farm at one time, and Judge Sulee was in charge of the County Pork Farm. That's why the Sulee Building has his name. The thing that I've always been impressed with was Ron's ability to establish relationships with people that are willing to volunteer and want to be a part of this. But the thing further that concerns me is that a number of years ago, probably 20 or more, Denver, who hosts the National Western, said, "We either have to get rid of the National Western or make it grow," because they weren't drawing any more people than we are now. And they decided to make it grow. They added an equestrian center as the first step, and it doubled the days of activity that occurred. We've seen a similar thing here with the event center. But my point really is this, Denver is now doing a major, major makeover, and I know we're not Denver, but the forward thinking that has led this county to where it is now needs to continue to be focused not only on, on the courthouse and the things of that kind, but on the fairgrounds. And I would encourage you to support any and all efforts that lead in the direction of the future.
Nice. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Ms. Troutman, did you have anything? Okay. Thank you, Ron and Lindell. Let's go to Ms. Holly Hinnies.
All right, Commissioners, the Board of Commissioners uses the consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the Board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a Board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of January 2nd, 2019. Number eight is to reappoint Mr. John Gloat as a county constable for a two-year term for Legislative District Number 33. Number nine is to accept the recommendation for appointment of Mr. Alan Van Chove, Joyce Baumann, Patty Bruner, Matthew Aden, and Dallas Voss to the 2019 Extension Advisory Board. Number 10 is to schedule a public hearing at 9:15 a.m. on February 5th, 2019, for Budget Supplement SP 19-002 for the General Fund Treasurer's Budget. Number 11 is also to schedule a public hearing, same date, same time, for Budget Supplement SP 19-003 for General Fund Health and Human Services Budget. Number 12, also to schedule a public hearing, 9:15 a.m. on February 5th, for Budget Supplement SP 19-005 for the General Fund Detox/CCA ADP Budget. Number 13 is the approval of the first quarter 2019 state and local agreement with the state of South Dakota submitted by Emergency Management. And finally, number 14 is to recognize and thank the volunteers for the month of December 2018.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. At this time, is there any members of the public who wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? Not, is, at this time, is there any Commissioners who wish to remove any items from the consent agenda, 7 through 14, for further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Hold on, Commissioner Roskinick? Okay, number?
Item 13.
Yes, sir. Any other Commissioners for, okay? If not, can we have a motion, please?
Move to approve items 7 through 14 with the exception of 13.
Mr. DeSanto, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gary Drews. Second by Mr. Gary Drews. Not, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Commissioner Roskinet, please, number 13.
Yes, I have a, I've read the material and I think as a Commissioner, that's my responsibility. So, I do have one question and that would be for Dustin.
Dustin, thank you. If you state your name, sir, and?
Good morning, Commissioner Dustin Willett. I'm the Director of Emergency Management for Pennington County Emergency Management.
Thank you.
So, reviewing the documents, these are turned in quarterly, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, on these statements or checks, I see October was October and November are consistent, but December, there's a fairly substantial increase. I just wondered what the reason for that was.
So, a lot of that comes from my compensation. And so, the city of Rapid City compensates their employees every two weeks. So, at a couple of times through the year, you end up with a month where there's, there's three pay periods that come due in that month. So, in December was one of those months where, where I received three paychecks instead of two paychecks.
Okay.
So, it was just a, just a two-week versus a monthly pay period schedule.
Just wondered if I was seeing, thanks, but I appreciate the explanation. Thank you.
Board, does any other questions for Mr. Dustin Willett? If not, can we have a motion on number 13, please?
Move for approval.
Moved by LaCroy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by DeSanto. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dustin. Regular agenda items 15 through 20. Number 15, items from the auditor, 15A. Please, Ms. Cindy.
Good morning, Commissioners. Cindy Muller with the Auditor's Office. Before you, we have a supplement to the MacArthur Fund State's Attorney and Sheriff's Office Budget in an amount of $638,000 from restricted fund balance. We would request approval of that supplement.
Do we have a motion or discussion from the Board?
Move for approval.
Moved by LaCroy. Second by Drews. Any discussion? All in favor from, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cindy. Items from the Sheriff's Office, 16A.
Morning, Kevin Toome, Pantee County Sheriff. I have a few items for you this morning. You should have a memo that kind of walks through the steps of this process. But the first one is to, probably do these in separate motions, I guess, would be simplest and cleanest.
Yes, sir.
The first one is declare seven vehicles as surplus property for a purpose of trade. This is part of our normal fleet rotation. So, what you're seeing in front of you is some vehicles are trading and then some that were totaled out, hail damage. So, we have an insurance check for those. Combination of those proceeds go towards purchasing new vehicles for our fleet as part of our rotation. So, that's kind of the overarching discussion, if you will. So, if you want to, I guess, take on the motions one by one, the first motion on the memo would be to declare the seven vehicle surplus property.
Thank you.
All right, so move.
Second.
Moved by Drews. Second by LaCroy. Discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. 16B, please.
Again, this is a motion to declare the vehicle surplus. Again, it was hail damage. So, the combination of the two would go towards purchasing the new vehicles.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Roskinet. Second by DeSanto. Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. 16C, please.
Do you have it?
Yes, I do. We're looking for a motion to schedule a hearing for a budget supplement for the General Fund Law Enforcement Budget in the amount of $26,675 from unassigned fund balance. And that's actually coming from the insurance proceeds of?
And your name is who?
Cindy Muller, sorry.
Are you our auditor? Thank you, Ms. Cindy.
Move for approval.
Moved by DeSanto?
Second.
Second by Roskinet. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All, motion carries. You're okay. 16D?
Then this goes to the motion to actually purchase the vehicles. And these would be for patrol vehicles for investigations and transport divisions. So, this would authorize us to use the funds we discussed above to purchase them.
Discussion or motion?
Move for approval.
Moved by LaCroy?
Second.
Second by Roskinet. Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. 16E, please.
Yep. You ready?
Yes, sir. We're going.
So, the next few relate to search and rescue. And again, I'll just talk about it kind of overarching in terms of how it, how it applies. But there's several things we want to accomplish here. One is create a reserve for search and rescue. Remember, like we've done with the bus, I think we've done it with IT in terms of equipment reserves. The bus, we put 100,000 a year into it. So, when it comes time to purchase the bus for a half million dollars, we have the money after five years when it's time to rotate. And we have some additional revenues that we've collected this past year. So, we'd like to ask the Commission, this would be a first, to create a reserve for search and rescue. So, that's one of the things we'll talk about. Then we want to supplement some of the, the money to go towards a purchase of some of the equipment. And third would be the actual vehicle purchase. Would have done this in 2018, but per the county rules, you have to guarantee delivery in that calendar year. And under the state contract, in order to the vehicle, we weren't guaranteed that we could get the vehicle delivered. So, we pushed it off till after the first of the year. So, that's why you're seeing it in January instead of last year. So, I don't know how you want to tackle these, the?
We'll do them separate, sir.
Yep.
E, F, and G, sir.
The first one's a budget supplement.
The motion that we're looking for is to schedule a hearing at 9:15 on Tuesday, February 5th, to supplement the General Fund Search and Fund, Search and Rescue Budget in the amount of $42,000 from unassigned fund balance, and also to establish a search and rescue long-term equipment reserve in the amount of $135,000.
So, we'll do the hearing first. Do we have a motion?
So, I'll move.
Second.
Moved by Drews. Second by LaCroy. Discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I just think that this is a good idea to start doing a reserve for that. Because before, we didn't, we never had one. And I think it just makes sense to be moving to that forward. So, I just, that's my only comment is I think it's good budgeting.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other discussion? Public, at any time, if you'd like to speak on any of these items, please raise your hand and I can recognize you. Thank you. So, we have a motion by Drews. Second by LaCroy. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item F, please.
And this would be the actual establishment of the reserve. And I guess, oh, Cindy, is there specific language they need for you in terms of establishing a reserve?
Just exactly what I have.
Okay.
There is to establish a search and rescue long-term equipment reserve in the amount of $135,000.
Okay.
And I can talk a little bit about where the $135,000 come from. The, oftentimes during fire season, we'll loan our equipment and personnel out to other jurisdictions, sometimes out of state. In this case, we went to Colorado a lot this year. Likewise, during fire season, if we need assistance, people come from other parts of the country here and they get reimbursed through federal programs for their costs. So, it's a way to generate revenue for Pennington County when they're using our equipment. Remember, search and rescue is all volunteers. They don't get paid for their time, except in these instances, they do go out of state, they have an opportunity to get paid by the other jurisdictions. So, they get a little compensation during those times. But there's a rate that we bill out our equipment at, so much an hour, so much a day. And that's where the revenue is generated. So, they have, there's 97,000 in there for part of it. And the other part, the 37,442 comes from an auction. We had a lot of old surplus equipment at search and rescue. Frankly, we just kind of went in and cleaned house. It was time to get rid of a lot of stuff, did better at the auction than frankly we anticipated. That's where the 37,442 comes from. And you'll see another dollar amount in there. That's related to the reserve. The supplement we talked about, that's carryover money from our budget. You know, the entire search and rescue budget is run off of $44,000, half by the city, half by the county. So, it's not a, not a large budget. But we had carryover money and that 42,000, that 44 will be used to purchase a vehicle that is listed in G. And then $2,000, $3,000 will revert back to the general fund as part of that. So, that's some of the background. And in terms of reserve itself, one of our long-term needs is another snowcat. We have three snowcats, but frankly, they're old and tired. They're 1970s, 80s vintage. So, we'll probably surplus those and sell them at some point when we go to replace it. Typically, what we do is go look for a used one. Like the ski areas in Colorado, Montana, they have snowcats that they use. Go find a, a used one. We, we don't use them very often, but some of those things, when you need it, you need it because nobody else has the specialty equipment. So, we use it. This past weekend, you saw our snowmobiler died of a medical condition up near the Wyoming border. And we used one of our UTVs with tracks on it to go retrieve that individual and recover him from where he had deceased, was deceased. So, again, when you need it, you need it. But a lot of times, it's just sitting there, waiting to be used. So, we try and strike that balance between having something that very functional works, but not kind of a lot of money and asset while it's sitting there. So, newer use generally works for us. And that's what we'll try and do with one of the snowcats at some point here with the reserve money.
Thank you, Sheriff Toome. If you'd like to have that used, I'm sure there's a few snowboarders that would take you up on that. There hasn't been a, or there hasn't been a motion. Do we have a motion or discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto?
I just want to point out, and Sheriff Toome's already pointed it out, but I appreciate paragraph three. It's a good explanation of where these funds are coming from. And I'd actually like to read it for the public. So, if they're looking at this video, they'll understand it a little bit.
Commissioner DeSanto, just for a sec. Will you pull your, there you go, sir, so we can hear. Thank you, sir.
But paragraph three on his report says, "In 2018, Pennington County Search and Rescue overcollected the wildland fire revenues by approximately $97,824 and underspent their approved budget by approximately $44,500. In addition, we held a large auction to get rid of many outdated vehicles and pieces of equipment that netted a check for approximately I want to point that out just because it, it gives a better, clear picture of the proper management and of, of the funds that, that search and rescue is using. So, thank you, Sheriff Toome.
Thank you, Commissioner DeSanto. Any other discussion?
Move for approval.
Moved by LaCroy for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Roskinet. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item G, please. 16G.
The last one's G, and that's authorization to purchase the suburban that I discussed previously. And I guess I would defer to the Commission on this. You can approve it today or you can wait till next meeting when you actually have the public hearing on transferring the funds. So, whichever works for you, either works for me. Approve it today or continue to the next meeting when the funds are actually approved and vote on it at that time. I'll leave it up to the Commission, so.
Is there a motion, Commission? Does like to continue or move forward?
I would make a motion that we continue and authorize it at the same time that we authorize the funds.
Is there a second on the continuance?
I'll second.
Second for discussion is Mr. Drews. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair, if I may, it doesn't impact our timeline on the, on getting the vehicle by waiting. I just want to point that out to the Commission. So, we, we're doing it in a sequence. You didn't think we were getting ahead of you. So, we're fine with continuing it, so.
Okay. Thank you, Sheriff Toome. So, we have a motion to continue by DeSanto, seconded by Drews. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Sheriff Toome.
Thank you.
Number 17 is items from Buildings and Grounds. Mr. Mike Cool. 17A, Mr. Cool, please.
Good morning, Mike Cool, Director of Buildings and Grounds. In December, the Board authorized a construction contract for the jail expansion remodel project. As part of that project, the administration of it, we contract testing services to ensure that specifications are met for the project. I have gotten a proposal from FMG Engineering for testing services for this project in a, in the amount, estimated amount of $19,132. Of course, ultimately, it's based on number of tests required. So, that's somewhat dependent on how the contractor proceeds with work. This amount exceeds the $15,000 that previous, previous boards have asked, that would come back and ask for permission to execute work on. So, I'm here today requesting your authorization that I can sign that contract and move forward with that work.
Mr. Cool, if you could tell us a little bit about testing services proposal, what basically does that do, sir?
They, it usually includes soils testing, concrete testing, in order to verify that strengths of concrete are met as they go along. They are, typically, most of these are required by code anyway to meet, ensure that specifications are met. But we do, do just the test, ground testing and stuff in, in order to understand that before we spend money placing something on the ground, that we have proper compaction and stuff is important to, to try and avoid settlement issues.
Thank you, Mr. Cool. Discussion or a motion by the Board?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy, please.
Thanks, Mike, for bringing us forward and, and kind of giving a brief explanation of what's happening with this. Because I think the beginning of the process, getting the testing right and kind of getting to know what, what's going on is the very beginning of the process. And those tests are very important. I think that also helped us out. And that's not a foolproof answer either. I mean, we had some problems over with the addition to the courthouse too with some compaction. But I think it gives us a good idea of where we're going to go. So, I'm supportive.
Thank you, Commissioner LaCroy. Any other questions? Commissioner DeSanto?
What led the previous boards to come to that $15,000 limit?
It was just something that was set out and frankly, it's carried forward for more than 10 years. The $15,000 amount, it is, it honestly, it becomes an, an obstacle often relative to this. But one of the reasons bringing it forward is also the, to, to see how this Commission feels about how they would like these items reported on. Often, I think that when there's authorization, we provide, I, I provided a, a budget estimate for this project overall. This cost, I should mention that earlier, is included within those costs to support those services. I think that could be, approval of a contract could be seen as approval of moving forward with the expenditures of that money. But as I indicated, I think it's important to see where this, we have a new Board, seeing where they stand on issues.
So, Mike, if we've had this at $15,000 for 10 years, obviously inflation, not only the scope of the project, but in the number of testing that needs to be done. But I'm assuming that costs have increased just because of the time.
Certainly.
So, why don't we discuss increasing that amount to $20,000? Where do you find we're going over every time on a project is, on this testing? Is it $5,000, $10,000?
Testing generally isn't, normally, relative to testing in particular, we rarely exceed, the, the number that we have provided is, is an estimate of how much testing is going to be required. That's rarely exceeded. I did, we did go cross over with a recent highway project because of, of the size of, and the mile square footage and the soil types out in that area that we had to add some additional funding to, to that. But those were within, within the 15 mile, $15,000 change limit that the Board has authorized, that I've operated under.
Okay.
I, 20, $20,000 certainly would be helpful. I, I guess if we're talking numbers, I would say that maybe a $25,000 might be a more appropriate number. But that would be?
Board?
Maybe we could visit with Mike and then bring that forward as a resolution or something. If, if I'm right, Ms. Holly, to change that amount. Maybe at the next meeting, we bring some type of resolution or ordinance.
I don't think it has to be a resolution. It's just a motion of the Board. But we can research that and put it on the agenda in the future if the Board so chooses.
If that's okay, Commissioner DeSanto, if you want to move forward with us doing that.
That's fine, let's do that.
Thank you. Commissioner LaCroy?
Madam Chair, I would suggest that the Building Committee review some of this. Madam Chair, I would suggest that the building committee review some of this and bring forward some of the changes that they would like to see forward. Mike, if you could do that.
Okay.
That way, they get the discussion of their board and get a more fair, accurate what we need to do.
I agree with you, Commissioner LaCroy. I think that'd be more efficient. And then bring it forward if that's okay, Commissioner DeSanto.
Fine.
Okay, sir. So we do not have a motion from the board. Do we have a?
Move for approval.
Move by LaCroy? Is there a second, please?
Second.
Second by DeSanto. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. 17B.
On January 8th, the Pennington County Care Campus Treatment Project bid, this project is finishing off the second floor of the east end of the former NAU building, which is now the Care Campus. We received four bids. All indications are that the bidding environment was very good. Our bids range from 1.89 million to 1.7 million dollars. As I said, it looks like we had very tight bids on that, a lot of interest. Upper Deck and Buildings and Grounds have reviewed the bids. Gustafson Builders of Rapid City is the low bidder, and we have no reason to think that they will not be a responsible contractor in this project. And the bid, through the review, the bid was handled in accordance with state law. We found no issues. To refresh memories in regard to how this project is intended to be funded, generous citizens donated $1.5 million, I think at the end of 2017, for the, to see that this project was done. They wanted to see the facility completed with all the functions that were originally considered for it. The treatment center will house people recovering from addiction. I would ask that the sheriff, if you're interested in hearing a little bit more about that, speaks on that. The $1.5 million, I think we've talked all along that we weren't certain if that amount could meet the budget requirements. Once the project bid, Sheriff Tom did visit with the donor. He had previously pledged that he would contribute additional funds to make sure that the project happened, and he once again pledged, under this bill, $700,000 to the project to see that it's completed.
Thank you, Mr. Cool. Sheriff Tom, did you have a few words?
Kevin Tom, Pennington County Sheriff. Mike talked about the treatment beds, and this allows to consolidate the LaCrosse Street facility, the balance of what's left at LaCrosse Street into the Care Campus, and then we can, the commission can decide what they want to do with that building going forward. And as Mike said, went back to the individual that originally gave us 1.5. He agreed to give us additional $700,000. I've not yet went and picked up the check, but he said he'll have that for me, so very generous donation, couldn't do it without that support, and frankly, comes at a very critical time with what we're seeing with substance abuse, in particular methamphetamine in our community. It'll give us 64 treatment beds, so very timely.
Sheriff Tom, can you tell us again, for the public's interest, what the second floor entails, what happens there, and who staffs and that kind of stuff?
Again, it'll be the balance of the second floor, the east half of the second floor above what was formerly the gymnasium in the building. We added a second floor and 64 treatment beds, you know, 32 male, 32 female. And again, it'll be for substance abuse, or this alcohol, drugs, or some combination thereof. And, you know, people stay there from 30 days to probably six months or longer in that facility as they transition from treatment back into their home or their community.
Do they stay in there the whole time, or how does that work, Commissioner, Sheriff Tom?
Initially, people are generally confined. They're almost like a lockdown facility where they can't leave for probably at least the first 30 days, if not longer. Eventually, you start transitioning out. You may go out for day trips, look for jobs, go to work, come back. It's a step-down process over a series of several months potentially.
Thank you. Board, do we have any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect?
Mike, what is the, so it's second, it's the east half of the upper level, Kevin?
That's correct.
What's the square footage? I always look at square footage and cost per square foot and.
I apologize, I don't have it off the top of my head. I think the overall, the second floor space is 17,000 some square feet.
Just about 10.
The, yeah, the actual remodel areas, portions of it are existing mechanical spaces that get some additional equipment in there, but they generally aren't being modified. So that's a significant portion. So the square footage of that area is just over 10,000 square foot. I think that's being remodeled under this project.
In the future, if we had a, like a layout, so we got it.
Sure.
We can put a size to it so we can understand, when I look at these numbers, that's my fault.
Commissioner LaCroy?
Thank you. I'll make a motion that I'd like to speak, if I get a second. I'd move for approval.
Do we have a second for discussion? Motion by LaCroy, second by Drews. Follow-up, hold on, Mr. Bearden. Follow-up, Lloyd LaCroy.
I think that maybe you want to add the, just add to your, the motion relative that is contingent upon receiving the additional funds before author, before we move forward with the contract.
Commissioner LaCroy, will you read the motion for me and then add that to your motion, please? Thank you, so the public knows.
My motion be to approve the Pennington County Care Campus Treatment Center by Gustafson for 1.8994, contingent on receiving additional funds.
The additional $700,000.
Additional $700,000.
Pledge amount.
Prepared by Upper Deck Architects and Cordwood Project.
That's what my motion was meant to be.
Thank you, Commissioner LaCroy. Did you get that, Ms. Kara?
Um, yes, I did.
Okay. Commissioner LaCroy, please, follow-up.
My follow-up is for some, I know you guys sat through quite a few of these meetings and so forth, but this is like the finishing touch for the Care Campus as far as adding the treatment center, the crisis care, and a lot of the stuff has been into work for over 10 years. I mean, legwork, and it's finally coming to completion. This is going to be one of the first, you know, state-of-the-art things that I would say in the country. I mean, Kevin Tom went out and learned from other places, and a lot of people did, and bringing everything into one area. It not only helps his budget and everything else, but it also helps the public defenders, state's attorney's office. I mean, they can just go across the street for an evaluation or whatever help that's going to, so all kinds comes together in peace. And I know from my involvement in the community 10 years ago, this was having a one-stop place, having all these things saves money, say, being able to just walk over to the hall and transfer to this person who's having problems and getting these answers. And so it is kind of a really big deal for our community, and I guarantee you, there's going to be people coming into our community to see how it's ran and how they can probably take it back to their communities to be able to start up. But the plus side run is we're going to end up transferring the treatment center from LaCrosse, and we're going to have that property available. And that's something that, as Mike said, we're going to have, and Kevin said, it's going to be in our inventory, and we're going to end up having to figure out what we want to go do from there. And that's part of being on the building committee meeting, you guys will discuss that, so.
Commissioner LaCroy, any follow-up?
That's it.
Okay. Discussion, board? Commissioner Ron Ross Connect, would you like to finish?
Oh, and when we, when we have these significant projects, for me, it helps to see a diagram. And so if somebody in the decision-making process, I'm totally for the project, but I always look at things, cost per square foot, percentage of breakdown in percentages. For an example, the design cost, we talked about the design cost on the, on another project where it really seemed high, but you explained to me that the design cost incorporated a lot more.
Facility.
More complex.
Built, yes.
So to me, in the future, if I can see a diagram and I can break this stuff down on a per-square-foot basis, it certainly makes the decision-making process easier for me.
Okay. That, and that's completely reasonable. It's an oversight on my part, and I apologize for that.
Thank you. Board, do we have any other discussion? We do have a motion by LaCroy and a second by Drews. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Number 18 is items from equalization. Director Shannon Rittberger.
Good morning. Shannon Rittberger, Director of Equalization. You have some abatement requests before you this morning, and you're going to see a bunch of these in the next couple of months. As you know, there are only very few specific reasons that the commission can grant an abatement set in state statute, and these are some of them. At this time of year, I bring a lot of them to you. Technically, the property owner should be here in front of you requesting an abatement, but it seems to work better that I bring them. Of course, the property owner doesn't have to show up, but I notice these situations through the year. An exempt entity buys a property partway through a year, then it's exempt from taxes the rest of the year. House burns down, property owner's thinking about other things than his property taxes. So when I see these things, I create an abatement. But we don't do it last year because you can't abate a tax bill that doesn't exist, so we wait for the tax bill to be printed, and then I bring the abatement before you. These are the first of 20 or 30, a lot of them. All of the others are working their way through the process. If the property is in city limits, it goes to the city first before it comes back here. City acts on it, doesn't impact your decision. Ultimately, the commission has a final decision, but we are, we will be waiting for some of them to come from Box Elder and Rapid City whenever their city councils meet. These just didn't have to go anywhere else first. So this is the start of them. They're, they're really pretty simple. The first one is an elderly assessment freeze. The treasurer initially determined that the property owner didn't qualify. More information was provided. They do qualify now. The treasurer has said that they should receive it. We get one or two of these a year. The second one, Montoya, is a house that burnt down partway through the year. Then Ellsworth Development, which is an exempt entity, bought some property, and we'll have quite a few of those. The last two are trailer houses where the court owner has acquired them through the abandoned trailer house process and destroyed them. Really very simple reasons for an abatement. I would suggest that you grant the abatement on all of them.
So.
Madam Chair.
Just one second. Commissioner Drews, do you, would you like these all one through five, board, or would you like to take them separately?
All one through five, in my opinion.
Mr. Drews, if you had a question, is that okay? One through five?
That's fine.
Okay. So Commissioner Drews, please.
I would make a motion that we approve all five of these abatements.
I'll second. Go ahead.
Motion by Drews, second by Ross Connect. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Drews.
Well, that was kind of quick.
That's the first time in a long time. Shannon, you're filling some load.
That trustworthy face you got, Shannon. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Shannon. Items from Health and Human Services. Your name, sir?
Good morning. I'm Barry Tice, the Director of Pennington County Health and Human Services. In the fall of 2018, Pennington County Health and Human Services was awarded $116,921 to the Leona M. and Harry B. Helmsley Charitable Trust. The goal of this funding opportunity was to identify and understand the strengths and opportunities for improving behavioral health care in western South Dakota and actionable recommendations for comprehensive services. At the end of this study, we are hopeful Pennington County and western South Dakota will have a comprehensive and objective assessment of the behavioral health system that highlights strengths, opportunities for improvement, potential barriers, patient-centered recommendations, and concrete next steps for implementation. This information, along with some of the data collected from the State Mental Health Services Task Force, will assist in formulating specific actionable steps for western South Dakota. In front of you are two contracts. The first is for the National Council for Behavioral Health, which has developed a coordinated system of providing consulting and technical assistance in the field of behavioral health. The other contract is for Jim Castleberry to be the project coordinator for this study, providing planning, coordination, and the ongoing review of the project development. Jim was also instrumental in the success of the initial grant and completing that grant application to the Helmsley Trust. So with that being said, I'm here to answer any questions, as well as I'm volunteering Sheriff Tom to help answer any of those questions.
So, board, do we have discussion or a motion, please?
Madam Chair.
Drews and then Ross Connect. Commissioner Drews?
Barry, can you give me just a little background on Jim Castleberry?
Sure. He's done a number of projects for Sheriff Tom, and Jim Castleberry was the former director of the Cornerstone Rescue Mission. He's currently the Assistant Dean for Walden University Online Studies. I can tell you through my work with Jim on a few grants over the years, he is the guru who can put together the data and push it out there and explain it in a way that is easily understandable for somebody like me. And so he, he was a kind of a natural fit to this process, and will help keep the process moving forward.
Thank you. I recognize the name, but I didn't, I didn't know the background.
Commissioner Ross Connect, please.
Kevin want to follow up?
Madam Chair, let me give you one more comment on Castleberry. I serve on the Cornerstone Rescue Mission Board, and Jim was the executive director, so I worked with him there. But the other grant Barry referenced, he worked with us on the implementation, MacArthur Foundation Grant, which we've received, the neighborhood of $2.5 million so far. So he's, he knows all of our systems, knows all the community players in terms of who works with who. And frankly, between Barry and I, we don't have the time to take it on, so that's what was built into the contract. So I'm very high on Jim's program and his abilities, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff Tom. Commissioner Ross Connect?
Yeah, Barry, I was looking at the agreement, and agreement has an effective date of November 1st, 2018.
Correct.
So then that agreement's good for one year?
It is through October 31st, and then what the Helmsley Foundation puts into place is we have 30 days afterwards to finalize what the National Council has put together, our financial reports, any documentation that Jim provides, and then we submit that. So it's, it's a one-year agreement, and that's when the award came to Pennington County was, the dates Helmsley has set up is November 1st.
So then the final results of that, or the scope of the work would be to provide a final report to the county?
Yes.
And then that's based on 11 calls? I just wondered what a call is, so I can better understand the program in the future.
Sure. So one of the key pieces with the National Council is they're going to be coming out here three times, I should say, two to three times, possibly four times. And the first time they're coming out, they're planning on February. They would come out for a few days and meet with different focus groups. And I say focus groups, it could be a couple of individuals, it could be a larger group, such as regional health, behavior management systems, the sheriff, myself, and ask different questions about our work within the mental health system. Prior to their visit, we're going to send them a number of data sets, data points. So I say that because the 11 calls, we've probably had at least six to 10 calls with them so far, and it's preparation and planning, them learning more about our community, asking questions. I have a folder on my email of a number of different things they ask for, which Jim and the sheriff and I have responded to, as well as the West River Mental Health Alliance. And so it's not all calls, those are just built into some of the pieces they bill for, of course. Within that contract, I believe.
I think there's some travel expenses capped at $13,760.
Correct. They have 10 onsite days as their estimated time. Um, they have ten onsite days as their estimated time. Uh, initial report development. They talk about the two-day onsite meeting with two people to present results and draft recommendations. Um, their final report and development and supplies and technology. And so when they talked about their first, uh, visit coming out here for two days, when we met with the Behavioral Health Alliance in early December, as we start discussing this, it looks like it's gonna be more like three days. And so some of that, there's gonna be some, uh, variables in there as well.
I appreciate the clarity. I just wanted to try to get a better grasp on the scope of the project.
Of course.
And in regards to, uh, Jim Castleberry, I've heard some really great things about Jim. Uh, $2,000 a month, I think you're getting a steal.
Yeah, I would agree.
Agree. Any other discussion? Commissioner, no? Commissioner LaCroy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think, I think this is good progress. I mean, we did some work on this earlier, and I'm glad to see this moving forward. I think it's a key piece for the information that we need. And thanks for clarifying, Barry, about what's gonna happen. I mean, they do some phone call visits, they do some site visits. I mean, these foundations do some extensive work, and I think we're really gonna benefit and learn from what- what happened. It's always good to ha- see an outside source come in a- and help like this. And if- if I remember right, JDAI, what was similar start to something like this was- was an assessment of our needs in our community. So, uh, I think this is well-needed, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner LaCroy. Commissioner DeSanto, please.
Uh, just a curiosity. Where, did you happen to be in peer yesterday for the Senate, uh, committee hearings on mental health?
No, I was not.
Okay. I wanted to find out if they'd spoken about anything as far as getting a hospital out here and that kind of thing.
No.
You're not aware?
Was not involved with that discussion.
Was.
Sheriff Tom, did you, were you in any of that discussion or find out anything?
No, I was. I did per, and I followed the activity through the summer study on mental health, and that's some of the stuff they took to the legislature for actionable items. But I did listen to that discussion. I think there's, this is more comprehensive than that and specific to western South Dakota in terms of, you know, this particular study. And like we said all along, this- this problem's bigger than any one of us. So it's gonna involve, you know, the state, the city, the county, the tribes, and not just the city and county here, but kind of throughout western South Dakota. And, uh, so I think this is something above and beyond what the task force looked at. I mean, they- they discussed this need in western South Dakota, but I don't think there's anything they're gonna take action on at this legislative session.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, we have no motion at this point. Board?
Madam Chair.
Uh, Commissioner Drews?
Um, I presume you wanna do these in two motions?
Yes, sir. A and B, sir.
First motion I would make is to, um, approve the first contract in the amount of $90,320, uh, for the National Council for Behavioral Health to conduct a comprehensive study to assess the community's current behavioral health services and, uh, have the chair's signature fixed.
Thank you. Is there a second, please?
I'll second.
Second, Ross Connect. So we have a motion by Drews, uh, second by Ross Connect. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Item B, do we have a motion, please?
Move for approval.
Moved by LaCroy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Drews. Any other discussion? Not, um, point of privilege, um, I know Jim Castleberry just from, with the mission and, uh, different things that he has done in our community. He is very, he's just an amazing guy. He's effective, he's efficient, and he has a heart of gold. So you guys couldn't have picked a better person to get the job done 'cause that's the bottom line with, um, Jim Castleberry. He knows his stuff. So we appreciate that. But thank you for the point.
Madam Chair.
Discussion?
I just wanna acknowledge that although it may require some staff time, uh, the county is not having any investment of dollars into this. Uh, this is all being reimbursed through that Leona M. and Harry B. Helmsley Charitable, uh, Trust Grant.
Are you asking them a question?
No, I'm not asking.
Okay.
I'm just, uh, acknowledging that we- we are not, the county itself is not expending any, any dollars. We may be expending some staff time on it.
Thank you. All right. Any other discussion? Now, we have a motion by LaCroy and second by Drews. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
I just wanted to say thanks to Jay Alderman, too, who, of course, these contracts are not in my wheelhouse, and he put a great deal of time and effort into those, and, uh, should be commended for that as well. So, thank you.
Thanks, Jay.
Thanks, Jay.
Thanks, Dave. Number twenty is Items from the Highway Department. Your name, sir?
Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway. Good morning, commission. Um, first item, uh, A, we are, uh, requesting the authorization to advertise and let for the, uh, our annual construction projects. Um, those include, uh, crushing at Cursed Pit, gravel for, uh, the northern portion, northernmost east portion there. Um, Benchmark Pit, uh, although our engineer approached me this morning, um, that may get put off due to the, uh, Forest Service not working. We gotta get permits and stuff from them. Um, I could have more details for you on that at a later date. Um, and then we'd like to do an overlay on Radar Hill Road and 156th Avenue. Um, and then asphalt surface treatment projects and, uh, asphalt surface crack sealing.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion or questions for Mr. Miller?
Question, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews?
I presume, Joe, and I, I just don't, I don't know this, but I presume that these are all part of a, a long-term plan or a five-year plan or...
Yes, um, we've got, uh, you know, last year, we didn't do any overlay, and we've, we haven't done any overlays in the last four or five years, um, history-wise. But, uh, as far as crack sealing and chip sealing, um, in 2018, we did fifty-eight. You know, the last four years, we've done forty to sixty miles, um, of crack sealing and then chip sealing, you know, over the last four years, we've done about, uh, thirty-five to forty miles. Um, so that is part of a, a plan. I don't know right offhand the, uh, uh, how often. Um, but I can get to that information for you at a later date as well.
There. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Chair, or Commissioner DeSanto?
Where's the overlay at Radar Hill Road and 156th? Where is 156th?
Uh, that would be out in, uh, the New Underwood Division. Um, it's a portion that was taken on in, forgive me for a second, Mark. What, do you remember what year we took that on? I believe that was taken on to the, the system in 2009 after, uh, uh, Caskey Homes started a subdivision out there, um, and approached us to, to take that on. There was an agreement put into place, um, through us, uh, to, to do the maintenance on that back in 2009.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Move for approval.
Second?
Moved by LaCroy, second by DeSanto. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Item B.
Um, we are, uh, requesting the authorization to advertise and let, uh, the 2019 annual supplies, um, which include, uh, the following materials: aggregate asphalt concrete composite, um, asphalt maintenance materials, precast concrete, uh, cutback emulsified asphalt, deicing, fencing, guardrail, magnesium chloride, seating, uh, timber bridge materials and trap control materials. Those are just some of the things we, we use on an annual basis.
Move for approval.
Second?
Moved by LaCroy, second by DeSanto. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Item C.
Item C, uh, this is a, oh, I don't have my motion in front of me here. Um, Rapid City School District, which is, uh, right next to us, their maintenance shop, uh, approached myself, uh, on wanting to purchase some of our, our deicing material, which is our salt sand material. Um, currently, they get it from Hills Material, which is a, a five percent salt mix. So Barry, you know, they're not doing a whole lot of good there. Um, they average about 125 ton a year, which is a drop in the bucket for what we use, um, or our stockpile. Um, there'd be, the purchase price would be $45 a ton, um, which we'd sell that to, to townships and, and road districts as well, um, periodically throughout the year. That's, I guess, about it. Motion, uh, is requested to authorize myself to sign the agreement between, uh, Rapid City Schools and Pennington County.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair.
Um, can I get a motion first, DeSanto, uh, Commissioner DeSanto, and then discussion? Is that okay?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner DeSanto for the motion and the second by...
LaCroy.
LaCroy.
Commissioner LaCroy. Follow-up, Commissioner DeSanto, please.
I just wanted to say, Joe, this is one of your first times up here, and so you ought to be walking away with a lot of confidence. On everything you've asked for, you know?
I don't think it's that easy, but...
Way to help him out, DeSanto.
Appreciate it.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
So I do have a question. With the school system buy-in, and you were talking about their agreements with, with some of this, are, are they paying our costs? Are they a little more for our pro, our, our troubles?
They're, they're paying a little more for our troubles. Um, it's a cost-plus basis.
Okay.
We do recoup our costs. And talking to, uh, Chris, our accountant, uh, you know, we put in, uh, anything over five tons, um, where it's $45 a ton. And then anything below that, because it is a little bit more of a hassle, is fifty dime, uh, excuse me, $55 a ton.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Board, thank you, Joe. I think I already said the motion and...
Yep.
Yeah, we just need a... Yep, okay. I apologize. So motion by DeSanto, um, second by LaCroy. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Item twenty-one, we have till about 10:30.
Move to take a break to 10:30.
Second.
Been a motion to take a break till 10:30. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Sorry.
Motion carries. Item twenty-one is Items from Planning and Zoning. Um, we are going into Board of Adjustment. Do we have a motion, please?
Go move.
Moved by Drews. Second by LaCroy. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Number A, please.
Good morning. Cassie Bolstead, Assistant Planning Director. Item A for Board of Adjustment is variance 1822. This is a request to reduce the minimum required front yard setback from 25 feet to four feet on the south property line to bring an existing carport into compliance in a suburban residential district. The applicant and the owner of this lot is Jerry Bertram. He is here in the audience today if you do have any questions for him. Um, this property is a lot located within Prairie Acres North Mobile Home Park. Um, it is currently zoned suburban residential district, and this lot specifically contains a single-wide mobile home and the 20-by-20 carport. Um, the way that this came about, um, is there was a building permit application in 2011 that was submitted for a carport to be located on this lot, but was later voided. A note on the building permit stated that, and they decided not to build the carport because there was setback issues. Sorry, I'm pushing buttons. Um, and it does not appear that the existing carport does meet the setback requirements. Therefore, a building permit and this setback variance is required to bring that into compliance. The way we found out about this is in October of 2018, one of the park owners contacted the planning department asking to have the Prairie Acres Conditional Use Permit reviewed. What they wanted to do at that time is they wanted to allow carports to be placed over the existing parking pads within the Mobile Home Park. As this wasn't actually in allowed use under their conditional use permit before, um, there was a condition in their conditional use permit that stated all structures needed to have a 10-foot setback from the access road within the Mobile Home Park, which these parking pads don't meet. So carports weren't allowed. Um, it was during the review of that conditional use permit that staff discovered that there were actually five carports that already existed within the Mobile Home Park. And that Lot 36, the carport encroached into the required 25-foot front yard back, front yard setback along Country Road. Um, in November of 2018, the Planning Commission did approve the extension of Conditional Use Permit 9842 with eighteen conditions. And that approval did allow carports to be placed over the existing parking pads within the Mobile Home Park. And it also required the owners of the lots that had existing carports to bring all of those into compliance, whether that be through building permits or the setback variance with this one. Um, I do wanna point out that due to the location of the existing parking pad for this lot, the applicant would not be able to meet that minimum required 25-foot front yard setback with a carport. Um, the parking pad has been in existence since the Mobile Home Park was put in. Um, so this was routed through the interdepartmental review process. There are a couple of comments that I would like to point out. The county highway department stated that the highway department in general opposes front yard variances. In this instance, since Country Road is a heavily-traveled road, and there will be a need to widen the pavement in the future, requiring more right-of-way, it is even more important to deny the variance. It also appears the roof over the patio or deck encroaches into the setback. I do wanna point out that the patio was constructed prior to 1994, so it's a grandfathered structure. The carport is the only one that we're worried about with an encroachment issue on this. Um, Rapid City Community Development said Country Road is classified as a principal arterial street on the city's major street plan, requiring a minimum 100-foot right-of-way. Currently, Country Road is located in a 66-foot-wide right-of-way. It is anticipated that as traffic volumes increase in this area, additional right-of-way will be needed for Country Road. It is not in the best interest of the public to grant the variance to reduce the minimum required setback to Country Road. Uh, Rapid City Engineering said it appears that the clear zone is not adequate, but the property appears to have been developed, allowing parking too close to the roadway. So it appears that allowing the carport does not make things any worse. Rapid City Engineering has no additional concerns with this setback variance request. And Rapid City Long Range Planning said that there was no transportation impacts. Um, there are four criteria that the zoning ordinance states that the Board of Adjustments needs to determine, um, for a variance. The first criteria is that specific circumstances or conditions, such as exceptional narrowness, topography, or sighting, exist. Staff has verified through aerial photos that the carport was erected somewhere around 2011 or 2012. The second criteria is that the variance does not grant a use which is otherwise excluded from that particular district. This setback variance would not grant a use which is otherwise excluded from property zoned suburban residential district. The third criteria, that due to the specific circumstance or existing condition, strict application of the zoning ordinance would be an unwarranted hardship. Strict application of the zoning ordinance would require the applicant to meet or exceed a 25-foot setback from the front property line. In addition, condition number eight of their conditional use permit only allows carports to be erected over the existing parking pads within the Mobile Home Park. So these restrictions would require the applicant to remove the existing carport. And the fourth criteria is that the granting of a variance is not contrary to public interest and is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the zoning ordinance. Granting a setback variance would allow for a reduced front yard setback within a mobile home park in a suburban residential district, which is not in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance. However, um, staff has not received any complaints or comments from the public regarding this variance request. So if the Board of Adjustment chooses to approve variance 1822, staff recommends three conditions be included.
Thank you, Ms. Cassie. Do you have any other pictures of this trailer court besides just his?
Yes, I do. Let me get to a different presentation here for you.
After that, board, we'll have discussion. I'll let her show you some pictures first.
I can find that presentation from their conditional use permit review. If I can find that presentation from their conditional use permit review. I think there's more pictures in here. This is their office. This is one of the carports that already exists out there. This is kind of looking down the street at another one of the carports on Lot twenty-six. There's his carport.
Is that the only one that's close, that close to the road, Cassie?
Yes, all the other ones. Let me get back to the overall aerial view on this one. All the other ones are within, closer within the park. So, all the other ones, there's one located on this lot right here. Oops, so there's one on this lot, there's one on this lot and there's one, Mr. Bertram's is right here. There's also one. No, we can't find it. Closer in on this street as well.
Thank you, Ms. Cassie. Board, would you like to hear from the applicant first? Okay. If the act, Mr. Bertram, if you'd like to come up. Got her, Jerry. Your name, sir?
Jerry Bertram.
Thank you, sir. What you'll do is just give us an explanation of your carport and some things that you would like the board to know, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
What you're gonna do is do an explanation to the board of, about the carport and why we should keep it and any other discussion you'd like to tell us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Primarily, main thing is, my wife did this back in two thousand and eleven and I was working seventy hours a week, eighty hours, and I was not involved, which now I want to correct the problem. And that's the main thing is, if you approve it, I will take, go upstairs, get Kathy a check, let her fill it out and sign it and take care of the problem.
Thank you, sir. Discussion, board, Commissioner Lacroix.
Cassie. Is there a, I was going through this and I drove by and the city's absolutely right, you know, I mean, it's in the clear zone. I see Country Road getting expanded within the next twenty years, ten, twenty years, it's gonna go just like Seeger Drive, there's traffic increase. And is it gonna be harder to expand the right-of-way with the, by approving the variance?
That I don't know, I think that would be more of a highway question maybe in terms of how they acquire more right-of-way. I don't know how they do it when there's structures within what they would like to acquire.
Okay, 'cause the way I look at this, Jerry and Commission, is first of all, I feel for you, your wife probably went ahead and did it for you and then you have to deal with it afterwards. But I think part of it's the mobile home court's problem is, is the pad was put too close. I mean, it's not your fault, Jerry, that the pad, and actually, carports in these mobile home courts are improving the aesthetics of the property. I totally agree, if you go up to Menelarch Hills, you can see that a lot of people got them up there and it adds to it and it's bringing properties more up to standard, I believe. But what I'm struggling with is this right-of-way and this variance. And I'm looking for a way to approve it, but I don't want, at some point when this road gets this way, that's the question I have. Are we gonna have a problem with obtaining the right-of-way? And is his property gonna end up having to be moved because it was too far close into the right-of-way now? I think the deck's grandfathered in and I think the house is gonna be closed, but I think that pad's gonna end up having to be moved eventually somewhere and there's not a whole lot of room, but there is some to move to the right. So, I'm just looking out for in the future. And our highway guys are gone now, so.
Madam Chair. Commissioner DeSanto, I, I'm sorry.
Joe and Mark, Joe and Mark did stay here, I just gotta find them.
Okay, maybe Holly could find Joe and Mark.
They had mentioned that they were gonna stay here until we were done.
Do you have a follow-up, Commissioner Lacroix?
No, that's my main, that's my deciding factor right now is, is if we approve this variance, is it gonna make it more difficult to get the right-of-way if we need it? Because I don't think it's Jerry's fault as far as where the pad was put and I think that's more the, somebody else's. But I just don't want to approve something, make it harder for us or anybody in the future to be able to make the white, the road wider.
I just have one question, guys, this is, if I'm correct, Cassie, these carports, if you look on page four of seven, are conditional uses. So, on a variance, like, conditional uses can be taken away.
Right.
So, I'm looking at your solution, Commissioner Lacroix, if we give them a variance, but it's still a conditional use, we can take that away once the road is being built. Unfortunately, that gives them a solution now for their carport, but in the future, knowing that that carport could be taken down once that road is expanded. And if that's five or ten or twenty years at least, that gives you somewhat of a solution. So, is that legal, Cassie, have we done that before? But it's a variance on a carport that's under item H for the whole area, does that make sense?
So, what about if the board of adjustment so chooses to approve it with an extra condition that on this specific lot, the existing carport comes down at the time of the expansion of the road?
I would totally agree with that.
Mr. Lacroix, okay. Any discussion, board? Commissioner Roskinet?
Okay, well, can I get the picture of the carport? How is that carport attached to that concrete pad?
Jerry, how is it attached?
Anchor bolts, there's see. At each pole, there's about five or six on each side, anchor bolts.
So, those bolts can be undone. Take a crescent wrench, we undo the bolts, we just disassemble it.
Yes, sir.
So, then the question becomes, I've done some research and that carport to me is a metal tent. It could, it's personal property in my opinion. I looked at the county assessor's card and if it was real estate, then it would be assessed and that carport is not being assessed according to my research. The other problem I have is if you take the carport away and you park two vehicles in there, you're still gonna have an obstruction. And I totally agree with PJ, this, I do the, based on that, I would go with his recommendation to make one more recommendation and that is to allow the carport until such time we have to increase the right-of-way or easement.
Thank you, sir.
I give my motion.
Okay, with that, that fourth condition, Cassie. So, we have a motion by Lacroix and a second by DeSanto with a fourth condition that it be taken down with the road expansion.
Madam Chair.
Okay, follow-up, Commissioner DeSanto.
One more piece of discussion, my guess is, is in the next twenty years, this is gonna be city. In the next twenty years, this is gonna be city property. They'll be dealing with this, not us. That'd be my guess, just.
Thank you. Did you understand what we're doing, Mr. Bertram? Okay, sir. So, we do have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we need to close. Board of Adjustment, please, do we have a motion?
I saw a move.
Moved by Drews, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lacroix. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. PJ Conover, please.
Sorry, let me get back a little bit here. PJ Conover, Director, Planning Department, items on consent agenda. The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for the planning and, for planning and zoning contains the following items. Item B, second reading of rezone eighteen oh seven and comprehensive plan amendment eighteen oh six for Paul and Carol Neiman. Approval's been recommend, recommend approval of rezone and denial of comprehensive plan amendment. Item C, request for refund for comprehensive plan amendment notice of public hearing letter fee for Paul and Carol Neiman and approval's been recommended.
Thank you, PJ. At this time, is there any members of the public who wish to remove any items from the planning consent agenda B and C? If not, is there any commissioners who wish to remove any items B and C from the consent agenda? If not, do we have a motion, please?
Proof of approval.
By Lacroix, Lacroix and DeSanto, you're kinda sounding the same. Second by DeSanto, sorry. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We're on the regular agenda items, item D, please.
Item D is second reading of rezone eighteen oh nine and comprehensive plan amendment eighteen oh eight for Pat Hall and Brian Hammerbeck. This is request to rezone sixty-nine point six-two acres from general commercial and general agriculture district to general, I'm sorry, from, yeah, from general commercial district and general agriculture district to general commercial district and to rezone five hundred and sixty acres from general commercial district, general agriculture district and low-density residential district to heavy industrial district and to amend the Pennington County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use from general commercial district, limited agriculture district and low-density residential district to general commercial district and heavy industrial district. This, again, this is the second reading, the Board of Commissioners did approve the first reading at their last meeting. Usually for a second reading, we don't go through everything in detail again unless you would like me to, I can give you the short and sweet version.
I think we're good, PJ.
Okay.
Sorry. The applicant, I think if that's okay, board, we'll hear from them first and then the public. Is the applicant here today? Sir, if you'd come up and state your name. This is your second reading on your amendment? And your name, please?
Pat Hall and I'm the owner of the property. And where would you like me to start, Commissioner?
Just anything you can tell us about the property, the buffers, the different areas in which, and why you want to put this zoning on this property?
Thank you. The property that you see outlined there, that land that fronts along Highway seventy-nine would be general commercial. Then, the land to the north and the south.
Thank you, PJ.
And the west, thank you, as you look at that map in the gray area, that's what we're requesting to be heavy industrial. To the north is heavy industrial, there's a salvage yard in twenty-nine and then in twenty-eight is the east-west connection power station. And I think we're all familiar with what's, what the power station does and the effect that has on the ground. The property that adjoins the great dark gray area to the east is owned by Mr. Mike Gould, I've spoken with him and he's aware of what we, what we are requesting and I don't believe he'll be here today, 'cause he told me that he wasn't going to be. That area that you see that is to the east that is no change, that's residential land that I currently own and that will stay residential, so I see that as a buffer between that and the industrial land. There's a real steep topography that runs on the west side of those lots and you, some of the commissioners took the time to be with me and you've been down Old Folsom Road there and seen the high quality of residentials down where you see section three. And we've told them that we want to stay to that type of residential development. So, I think that's a great buffer for them and we're taking that risk with residential. Then on the south end of the property, you'll see the gray area that is mostly the shooting range or the trap club. There is a couple of residences in there that are next to the highway and next to the trap club. And then you'll see the area that says no change and those are twenty to forty acre parcels and we want to leave that as residential. So, we're buffering that. And I've met with the neighbors on the east side, if I've missed someone, I, is it, 'cause I haven't left phone messages to the best of my knowledge. Then, further south, approximately a mile, little less than a mile, is Black Gap. I met on Saturday with their board and I thought we had good communications and some of those folks are here and they'll express their concerns. Originally, they were not in the mailing area, so I hadn't had contact with them until they attended the meetings. Hopefully, we've satisfied some of their concerns. So, I think the buffers on the north, again, I'll review and say that is industrial, there's heavy industry in that zoning with the salvage yard, which is very well-kept and professional. And then, as you're aware of, the east-west connector. That would be the borders that I see on the north. On the west side is Highway seventy-nine and we propose, and that already is, commercial, we had to do some minor line adjustment there. Those lots are all plotted as a result of the highway going through and I feel that'll be a great buffer. Then on the south, the gun club, residential and then again on the east side, residential. Would anyone have any questions that they want to ask me?
Any discussion they'd like to, from the board? Commissioner DeSanto?
I, I'm gonna hold my question as how we've heard from the rest of the.
Okay.
Folks.
Thank you. Just a quick question then.
Yes, sir.
I'll hold mine too. Say, Pat, if you, your marketing technique for these would be to sell them, the legal description would be quarter, 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 which would, you could legally sell those in forty-acre tracts without replanting?
Well, that's what I'd hope to do.
Well, that was.
Market'll dictate, that's the way we're gonna start.
Okay.
Market'll dictate whether that'll work or not, of course, and we don't know all the things about market, we haven't been able to, or I shouldn't say I haven't been able, but you don't do a feasibility study until you know what your zoning is. But yes, the intent is to sell those in forty-acre pieces. And I just want to remind the commission, and I think you're aware of it, but the Rapid City dump is to the north and on the west side of Highway seventy-nine recently announced the expansion coming down, I talked with the neighbors, clear to the south in Black Gap and I, in my understanding when that was announced, there was no problem and if you look closely at the wind current maps, you'll see that'll have as much effect, but we would be closer. But I've assured those people, and I mean it, that I want to work with them. We're proud of our city and everything we do in Rapid City, I think, shows that we are proud of the community. And incidentally, those people buy and sell homes and that's my business, so I want to get along with them, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Next, we'll have the public, if you'd like to raise your hand and then come up one at a time. Sir, and then state your name if you would. Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Matt Bender. I am president of the Ranch at Black Gap Homeowners Association. The Ranch at Black Gap first developed nearly twenty years ago. This is a development just south of this proposed area. We are a strong, diverse residential community, approximately a hundred and twenty-five homes, recreational trails, park area located little over a mile, little over a mile south of the property proposed for heavy, heavy industrial use. There we are, yep. Our covenants regulate what can and cannot be done within each lot within the development. We hold each homeowner to standards to keep our community a well-maintained and attractive area in which to live and raise our families. The heavy industrial rezoning request for the land just a mile north of our, thank you, development raises serious and significant concerns within our development ranging, excuse me, regarding potential air quality, noise, odor and potential long-term water and land pollution as development progresses. This land sits in a basin, as Pat Hall was mentioning, between two ridges. One ridge to the north divides the land from city landfill area and other existing industrial uses as defined by the county's zoning ordinance. A-one auto salvage sits on top of that ridge. A smaller ridge to the south separates the property proposed for rezoning from the Ranch at Black Gap. Just, just to north of that is the Trappin' Skeet firing range. We have questions and concerns about what rules or limits, if any, will be imposed to regulate future heavy industrial businesses on these lots. What will the aesthetics look like traveling from Rapid, or traveling into Rapid from the south? Is there in fact proof of need in the area for heavy industry as required by the county's ordinances? Approval of the rezoning will, over time, if not immediately, greatly change the character of the land use in this area. The corridor of the Heartland Expressway from Denver. The corridor of the Heartland Expressway from Denver to Rapid, visitors traveling this route into Rapid City will pass through and be welcomed to the area with industrial use, first approached as they approached Rapid City. The city's Vision 2040 goal concerned, concerning an area around the Ellsworth Air Force Base, and this is on HS-7.2, states the county should not allow development in areas where the risk of potential health and safety cannot be mitigated. Though we are located a mile away, there are individual households much closer and downwind of this proposed property. Excuse me. At the invitation of Pat Hall and Brian Hammerbeck, representatives of the Black Hills, or the Black Gap Homeowners Association, met with them this past Saturday at the Trappin' Skeet Club. They explained to us what developments they had in mind and their reasons for the rezoning request. We had what I would characterize as cooperative, productive meeting. They described the types of uses they envisioned selling acreage for and agreed to keep us in the loop as they progressed with their plan. We appreciate their willingness to take time to do so. Mr. Hall did say he would undertake pre-screening companies to assure they might be more environmentally friendly towards adjacent neighboring residential areas, pointing out he, too, had an interest in making sure uses of the land he would sell are compatible with one another and not at odds with the surrounding residential buffer in his plans and what they called for. He noted he might consider drafting covenances for these plots to provide additional safeguards. Hopefully, this will become a reality. We appreciate his expressed willingness to look at our, or look at this and other ways to address our concerns. Even though we remain opposed to the rezoning request, assuming the commission goes ahead and approves this rezoning, I believe we have at least opened a positive dialogue with Mr. Hall and Mr. Hammerbeck. And hopefully, we'll be able to continue with a cooperative relationship going forward based on the commitment we have made to work together and keep a meaningful communication. Thank you for listening to our concerns. We hope as our elected representatives, you will take our concerns seriously. Families at Ranch at Black Gap, thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Anyone else from the public like to speak? If not, discussion from the board?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto?
Seeing this the first time a couple of weeks ago, and then going out and visiting the area, driving around Old Folsom Road, and I have a couple of concerns. One of my, one of my biggest concerns, generally speaking, I'm a commissioner that wants to allow people to do what they're, with their land, what they want to do with their land. But if it comes into conflict with the safety or health of the neighbors, then it kind of sends up a red flag for me. So I have the same concerns for those Black Gap residents that they have. And so one of my questions, and I mentioned this at the last meeting, was would it be agreeable, and maybe they already brought this up at your meeting when you, when you met the other day, to rezone this in, into light industrial as opposed to heavy industrial? Because that would limit the usages of those plats and probably mitigate anything going in there that could possibly harmful, be harmful to the aquifer or their well water or air quality conditions. So that's something I want to throw out there as a thought. The other question I have is for Highway Department. If we start getting a lot of new businesses out there, we're going to need to probably redo Old Folsom Road and 234th Street to accommodate heavier truck traffic and employee traffic and so forth and so on. Would that be correct?
Did you want the applicant first or Highway? Mark?
Well, let's get Highway to answer that question.
State your name, sir.
Good morning. Mark Schock, Pennington County Highway.
Thank you.
We did give some, some, three approach permits on Old Folsom Road this summer for, to this applicant, but those are for the residential lots that meet Old Folsom Road. They specifically say they are not for subdivision of those properties.
Okay.
Access on 79, of course, would be for state DOT.
Okay. If indeed, the, we, they formulate these businesses out there, would, would they need, would we need to improve 234 or Old Folsom Road to handle those traffic measures?
If there were to be a large subdivision of those lots that border Old Folsom Road, I would have to say yes. That road is, is narrow. It has no shoulders, or very little shoulder. If the, the traffic is increased out there, yes, the, the road would need improvements.
Okay. Thank you.
Did you have a follow-up with the applicant? Commissioner DeSanto?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to hear back from Pat and see what his thoughts are on my suggestion and as far as light, light industrial is concerned, and what, what his solution would be to.
Sure. First, that's.
The road situation.
Yeah. Yes, good questions, Commissioner. One, the traffic on Old Folsom Road, as you probably know clearly, that's out there is a residential development.
Right.
That's way denser than what we are proposing and what we discussed with the county superintendent. So there's lots there that are 10 acres and 40 acres sized lots on Folsom. And I would not see any way that we'd have anything below 10 acres. And my goal is to sell them in 40 acre parcels.
Gotcha.
But there's already, because of the road, there's already one 10 acre parcel there that was plotted long ago. So we won't have significant impact because there's not that much land, and we're not going to be subdividing into housing lots.
Right.
You know, that would be similar to like how Black Gap is. And I don't mean that bad. I just, we don't want that kind of density.
Sure.
And that isn't the design for that. Then regarding your question about whether it makes sense to be light industry or heavy industry, I must admit, I'm doing this for a profit.
Yeah.
And if you ask me to do it light industry, it will not be profitable. There's too much light industry in our community, and it's been set in for quite a long time. There's two different markets. But Commissioner, I can assure you that I can't have an impact on the water if I follow state regulations and the county regulations. I think those are concerns that are, how would I best say that? Maybe like Roosevelt said, the only thing we have to fear is fear itself. We're going to be a good neighbor. And as I told the people, I'll, I'll make their real estate worth more money. When there's concentration in employment, people do like to live close. But our impact on Highway 79, I hope that will look better than the balance of 79 in the Rapid City. That's our goal. And as you know, there's heavy industry there.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Anything else?
Anything else, Commissioner DeSanto?
It might be a, more of a question for PJ as far as if we were to allow for the rezone with restrictions. Can we do that?
We've, we don't put, we don't put conditions on rezones.
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Ross Connect, please.
Yes, I, I can understand the concerns of the folks at Black Gap. The day that we had the last meeting, after the meeting, I went out there and personally drove through the entire subdivision. And then I drove from the subdivision down Highway 79, Campbell, and I kind of quit where I saw the, the rail system. So what I observed, and I'll just, it might take a little time here, but I think it's, I put some effort into this, and I want to base my decision today on facts and not hypothetical conditions. There's a fact that the Rapid City landfill, it's a sub-sitled D facility for the operation, but permitted by the State Department of Environment and Natural Resources. On an average day, the landfill receives 700 tons of waste. That property is located closer to the subject property than the subject property is located to Black Gap. But that's a fact. Also, I observed numerous heavy, heavy, existing heavy industrial properties between the subject property and Campbell Street. Third, the, the tie, Rapid City tie, that's the piece of property that borders the subject property. That's a 40 acre property. And it, what that does is it's one of several ties between the eastern and western electrical grids. Power coming in from either end is converted to high voltage DC, which then continues to the other side where it is converted back to AC and continues to the other grid. These AC/DC, AC ties are necessary due to the slight frequencies, frequency difference between the two grids. Any attempt to directly connect the two grids will result in the generators between the two groups, two groups fighting to pull each other into phase. This $70 million project took place in roughly 2003, and it's rated at 200 megawatt. The results of this is noise and vibrations. And I have, I did some studies, and I have known, I have verified complaints of neighbors with this facility creating noise and vibrations. This property lays directly to the north of the subject property, so, and it will subsequent, it's going to be, and the Rapid City's future land use, this property will be considered heavy industrial. There's a, the subject property, the lowest elevation is 3,220 feet. There's a saddle between Black Gap and the subject property that reaches 3,480 feet. And that's 180 feet difference. To me, that ridge would serve as a, from a visual, visually, I think that ridge is a natural barrier. It's, it's one and a quarter miles from Black Gap to the subject property. And so I would feel that that would, just that ridge itself would provide a natural barrier. I have heard no complaints from anybody in Black Gap about the 700 tons a day waste that goes into the landfill, which is only located another mile north of the subject property. And as Pat said, there's very little demand for light industrial property in Rapid City, especially 40 acre tracts. In the last 10 years, I only know of two 40 acre tracts that were light industrial that sold, and they're located out on Dias Avenue. If he were to, if he were to rezone those to light industrial, he would sit on them for a long time. And the day he bought the property, he probably started losing money because until that's developed, he's not going to see a positive cash flow. I just don't feel light industrial is, as I said in the last meeting, the highest and best use. I did talk to PJ. If the property is rezoned to heavy industrial, there is a possibility that it could be, if, if the man increased for light industrial, there's a better probability of that property being rezoned from heavy industrial to light industrial, then light industrial to heavy industrial. So it's not set in stone. If it does get rezoned to heavy industrial, it's not set in stone. That's going to stay that way. And any, any adverse development out there, I would think the Department of Energy and Natural Resources would step in and protect your water quality, protect your air quality, and govern noise. That AC/DC converter, that's regulated by the PUC, the Public Utilities Commission. So when, when it gets in the heavy industrial, I, I feel if there's something adverse, it's going to be, they're going to have to go through the same procedure that Rapid City landfill does, to monitor the concerns that you folks at Black Gap have.
Thank you. Commissioner Ross Connect?
Madam Chair.
Follow-up, Commissioner DeSanto?
I'll follow up on, you know, we keep bringing up the landfill. And if I'm correct, that landfill existed prior to Black Gap going in. So the people, the residents that purchased their homes in Black Gap at that time already knew there was a landfill there, and they probably knew that, that the landfill would expand. But they also bought their homes knowing that they were surrounded by ag on all sides and didn't probably, and my guess is, didn't conclude that in the future, they would no longer be surrounded by ag on all sides. And so, you know, I, I like to take into consideration the awareness that people had, and I've done this in many different situations with our rezonings and variances and stuff. Were the people aware, prior to buying them, their homes, that they were going to wind up with heavy industrial next door? They were aware of the landfill, but they weren't aware of the, that they, that this ag, general ag would be disposed of and rezoned to, to heavy industrial. So I understand why they would be upset there, seeing that they're now, no longer surrounded by ag. They're going to possibly be surrounded by heavy equipment and truck traffic and noise and dust and that kind of sort of thing. And, you know, as far as environmental impact is concerned, I lived off of West Chicago. We had environmental impact studies and everything else on several of the pits that are over there. And we still dealt with great deals of dust and, and so forth and so on for, well, even to today because of the, the gravel pits and blasting and that kind of thing. So fractures in, in our foundations and, and all kinds of stuff like that. So anyway, that's just my thoughts right there that, that those people, they were aware of the landfill, but they weren't aware that their general ag had turned into heavy industrial.
Thank you, Commissioner DeSanto. LaCroy or Drews? Commissioner LaCroy?
I, you know, I think I was, I was the lone vote for no on this last go-around. And it's not because, it's because I felt for, it's just as Mark said, for the residents that are out there that they didn't have no voice. Maybe that one woke up Mr. Hall and Brian to go have a meeting with them. I don't know. But having that meeting, I think, from the sounds of it, enlightened a lot of you folks of what, what's going on. And I really appreciate you guys coming here. It's a long process, and, and somebody's got to make a decision. And, and I think, I think the best bet is heavy industrial. I used to work out there for 27 years at Mar-a-Lot, driving that whole area. So I'm very familiar with it. And I think, I think we all knew that Heartland Express was, is the best use for that area. I think Mr. Hall, from what I've heard today, has expressed that he has compassion for the community, that he wants to have a buffer, which I think, that was one of my biggest concerns, is creating buffers, and there's other residentials out there. I don't think we have the problem of you guys, Supalls has. I think a lot of people think that we may have a feedlot out there, and that, I think, you greatly under, that's well warranted. That's more prevalent East River, but not here. So, and I think, from what I've heard in the community and some of the businesses that are coming here, you know, like WL Plastics, ideally WL Plastics would have been better off out there because of the railroad. But went somewhere else because, and then they transport all the raw materials to and from, that type, because of that. So I'm just, I'm glad that you guys had the compassion to come here and explain that. I am gonna change my vote today, but I'm glad it brought some of you guys together to have some of that discussion.
Thank you. Commissioner Drews?
I did visit the property and visited on my own, and then I did go out and visit with Pat Hall, 'cause I wanted to see the exact boundaries of this. I think one of the best things that's come about from this is the communication between the Black Gap residents and other residents in the area, and Pat Hall. And I think over the years, Pat Hall has proven himself as being a solid developer for our area, and one that is concerned with the community and concerned with what his neighbors, what their thoughts are. And so I think that this is going to be a strong working relationship as we move forward, and therefore, I would like to make a motion.
After you speak, you can't make a motion, sir.
Okay.
Do we have a motion from the board?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Ron Roskinek, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Drews, discussion. I haven't spoke yet, if I could just have a few minutes. PJ, can you bring up the future land use of the city, please?
On rapid map or the slides? How far out do you need to go?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Right there.
The future land use of the city, the gray is light industrial, if I'm correct, and the light gray and the dark gray is heavy industrial?
That's correct.
Okay, and that goes how far? Do we have a bigger map of that, heavy industrial and light industrial in that area?
Yes, I'd have to go back to rapid map and show you.
Thank you.
City, there we go. It's kinda limited to scale of the map.
It shows a big piece of what I'm talking about, though. So if you look at this corridor, since I was in city council a long time ago, that corridor's been light industrial and heavy industrial for a long time. So that corridor was made for light industrial and heavy industrial. So when Black Gap built, and I don't know how far or how long ago that was, then a lot of people unfortunately do not look, when they're building something, at future land use. I wouldn't have known anything about it until I got on the city council. But I also would know, once I got on here, that future land use, city is going towards light industrial and heavy industrial for the future out in these areas, obviously from what Mr. Roskinek said. That being said, that AC/DC converter needs a pretty good buffer, and I think, as Mr. Roskinek said, also that buffer with that hill, I think would be a change of what we could do differently on the other side. I still think Black Gap could've had a buffer before it hit seventy-nine as well on the west side of it, because a lot of times when you have buffers like commercial, like they could have grocery stores, whatever, and then medium density, things like that, that helps too, where you're not getting so far in, where you're hearing the heavy traffic and all the issues from a big highway, or the trucks that are becoming on that highway. So I think there could've been a little bit more thought when they built Black Gap, the developers, but that being said, I appreciate that the applicants decided that that would be good communication to visit with the person that was building, because in the future, that's gonna be huge, that when somebody says something, they keep their word, and number two, that Black Gap understands that hopefully in the future, they can do things that keep those buffers and keep those things for their future development, now that they have not one on the west side, but hopefully on the north side for the future, that you've learned about future land use and what you can and can't do in between there. So a lot of it's communication, and Gary was right, that's huge, and I'm glad you guys came to somewhat of a solution, and that you know at least what's gonna happen, and that we do as well with this communication. So Matt, did you wanna speak?
Quick little rebuttal, or not, or clarification.
Yes.
The west flank of our, the whole development along seventy-nine is, I believe, zoned or open to be zoned to commercial.
Okay.
So could have, like I said, gas stations, small grocery stores, so.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for clarifying that. We do have a motion on the floor, a motion by Roskinek, and second by Drew. Any other discussion, board? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nope.
Four ayes and one no from Commissioner DeSanto, motion carries. Thank you for your time today. Ron, item E on the planning.
Cassie Bolstead, Assistant Planning Director. Again, item E, this is to piggyback off of that variance request that we just approved. This is Mr. Jerry Bertram's request to refund the penalty fees associated with that variance request. Per Section 511 W-1 of the Pennington County zoning ordinance, any owner of property upon which work has been done, for which a conditional use permit, variance, mining permit, plat, rezoning, or planned unit development is required prior to issuance of said permit, shall pay a doubled application fee plus a five-hundred-dollar penalty fee. So when Mr. Bertram submitted his variance request on November thirteenth of last year, he paid a total filing fee for his variance of one thousand one hundred and seventy dollars with those penalty fees. Mr. Bertram is requesting that the penalty fees totaling eight hundred dollars be refunded.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
You know, as late, as of late, I've been not in support of returning penalty fees, but in this case, really all it is is a shelter that can be removed within three hours. And I find it kinda hard that you're on a rented lot and having to pay for your own variance fee and all that other stuff. I mean, I really don't believe in this, so I can't make a motion 'cause I spoke, but I just wanted to express I'm willing to work with this gentleman.
Do we have a motion?
I've moved to reimburse the eight hundred.
Motion by DeSanto to reimburse, or to waive the penalty fees, is there a second?
Second.
Second by LaCroy, discussion?
Madam Chair, just to clarify, I don't think we're waiving the penalty fee, I think we're refunding the penalty, he's already paid it.
I'm sorry.
Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner DeSanto. Refund of the penalty fees, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item F. If someone could, Cassie, if you would visit with Mr. Bertram, in case he didn't hear, thank you. Item F.
Item F is a request or motion to schedule a special Board of Commissioners meeting regarding Crowell Corporation's application for mining and construction permits. If you saw me looking at my phone throughout the meeting, it's 'cause there was communication between our state's attorney's office and the applicant's legal counsel. As of ten forty-seven this morning, the legal counsel for the applicant is requesting that the hearings before the planning commission and the Board of Commissioners occur after May eighth. So we're requesting that this item be continued until the planning commission has a chance to reschedule their special hearing.
Do we have a motion, please?
So move.
Move by LaCroy, second by Drews. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item twenty-two, items from chair and commission members. Holly, did you have a chair item for me?
Commissioners, I put an agenda item on for the attendance of the NACO conferences in 2019. For the new commissioners, there was extensive discussion last year about getting more involved at the national level, and we budgeted for attendees to attend some of the conferences that the National Association of Counties puts on. So in your packets, I did put the three conferences that they put on, and approximate costs for what the hotels and the registration fees are, and then had a conversation with the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners to find out who typically attends what type of conference, to see how it would make sense for Pennington County to get started. And so I have also listed the typical attendees on each one of those different types of conferences. So at this point, I just wanted to put this on for the board to get started, thinking about who wants to attend and if they can. It's gonna be my recommendation at this point to go to the annual conference in July to get started, and that registration's gonna open fairly soon, and we'll need to get flights booked fairly soon. So at this point, I will stand for any questions that anybody may have.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy, please.
Thank you, Holly, for looking through this. I was looking through some more of this. For some of the new commissioners, this was a pretty challenging, and it was a commitment that the commission had made last year to do this, and I fully support it. In the discussions of bringing this forward, I know Holly's done some big contacts with the Sioux Falls, I can't remember his name, I sat down with the...
Robert.
Robert, when I was in Sioux Falls, and this is how this all kinda got brought forward. But I, the intent of the NACO involvement was to do, commissioners to check which one they wanted to, 'cause there's, there's a western interstate region one, which includes Colorado, South Dakota, North Dakota, it's, and me and Holly had had these discussions, and at the beginning, we thought this was probably the most beneficial, but also, then after some of the discussions, the annual one with the banquet and stuff would be the more learning one. I still think we need to keep two options open, for the simple fact, not everybody can schedule around a certain time of the year. Take a look at them, the agenda's not out for the national one in July, but I mean, kinda take a look at them, but I know the Spokane one, when I was looking through that, the itinerary is out for that one, personally for me, some of the Black, you know, dealing with the Black Hills National Forest, I think they've got some good training on that, I think's beneficial. So I think, I'd encourage the commissioners to kinda look at those and check them out. And if you have any questions, feel free to give me a call, or Holly, Holly's, the one, Holly and Joan are doing a lot of the research on it. But this was something, the commission had decided that we need to step outside and learn something. And firm believer that, you know, I drive the same street to work every day. I don't go anywhere else unless somebody wants me to go somewhere else. Until you, that's one good thing about this job as commissioners, you too are that same way. You take the same street to the store, same way back, every day, until a constituent says, "Come out over here and look at this," and then you go to a new area. That's the whole idea of this training, is to get you to look outside the box and see what's going on in other areas. Because we all think we're unique and we're special, but other people are doing bigger, better things than we are, and we can learn from them. And that, that's the whole thought process on this, is to get us to think outside the box and go learn a little bit. And when this discussion first come up, I said I wanted our commission manager to go. I know there's some problems in there, but I think it's important as a team that everybody get involved in this, and bring back the experiences and talk and see what they think of it, and if it's not worthwhile after this first one, come back and tell us if you don't think it is. And when, then we can take it out of the budget. But I think, I think we owe it to our constituents and ourselves to look outside the box and try something new.
Thank you, Commissioner LaCroy, discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews?
Last week, I was in peer on other business, and so I did stop into the state county commissioner's office and visited with Bob Wilcox in regard to this. He certainly encourages us to be a part of it. He felt that the Western Interstate Region Conference was probably the one that would be the most valuable to us. At the same time, I talked to Mike Ortner from Hot Springs, he's a former county commissioner, he was a former NACO representative on behalf of the state association. Mike encourages heavy involvement, he said that while he was on that, he made lots of good contacts around the country that shared information that he was able to pass on to Fall River County for their communities, that was a big benefit for him. So I'm a big believer in continuing education, and that's what I would look at this as, is being continuing education for us, in addition to providing us potential contacts and benefits that we just don't have those contacts at this point in time, that could, I think, really be beneficial to the county.
Thank you. Discussion on NACO? How are we moving forward, or how do we move forward, Commissioner LaCroy?
I got a suggestion. I think you've seen some of the stuff, or if you looked at it recently, check your dates. I think we should be open to two. I think the Western Interstate Region one, and the main Las Vegas one in July. Staff needs to know ASAP as to if that's which one, which one you're looking at.
Commissioner LaCroy, do we, or Ms. Holly, do we have a budget? Did we budget for it this year, sir?
Yes, we do.
Yes, and that's my second.
Sorry.
Pertay, is, I would like to impose, let's make it a personal challenge to each commissioner, just keep it under two thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Per person. That's just, we budgeted ten, if I remember right. We have a little bit more than that, but that's for our local conferences and so forth. Am I correct?
I'll have to double-check the numbers, but I believe you're close, sir. So, 'cause I think it was budgeted on two commissioners to attend, not all five.
I thought so, two commissioners.
Madam Chair. Our thought process was, is that commissioners that had been here and gotten used to the commission for a little while, were gonna go, and then we were gonna kinda rotate like that.
I still think, I think we put in ten, but when I was running some of the numbers, I think it could be done for two to twenty-one, for Las Vegas, I'm thinking twenty-one hundreds where I come into the Spokane one. I'm thinking so much, this is my thought, if it's the ten thousand we do, I still say two thousand. I do believe a commissioner can cover their own per diem, if they need to be. That's just my personal opinion, you guys decide on your own, but I know we budgeted that X amount of dollars, and in order to stay in that budget, I think we need to work together to stay in that.
So Commissioner LaCroy, it's two thousand per person, and then they get to pick the trip they're going on, is that the deal?
That's what I would suggest, look at the numbers, because just the numbers that I threw out for the Las Vegas one, I did some research, and they're matching up pretty close to what Holly had, motel rooms are about the same, it's the airfare. That, and one of the other problems that we may have, if you're going to the July one, we may have to move our commission meeting to the following Wednesday or Thursday to accommodate that, because it ends on the fifteenth, we have a commission meeting on the sixteenth, and I don't think you can get an airfare, the airfare comes back on that Tuesday, so that's one other thing to know who wants, which one they'd like to do. But I do believe, I honestly believe, after looking at those numbers, if you do the Spokane County one, if you average it out, and just say airfare's five hundred, registration fees five hundred, you got motel, that's gonna average a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars a night, that's why I'm saying, folks, we could help each other out by covering our own per diem, not putting that in, and maybe even our own transportation. So just something to think about, for, and that, by doing that, we can help each other out by doing that.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I guess I'd like board direction, if you want to send me, I'd like that very clear, so I know what to expect.
So you budgeted ten thousand, and you have two thousand in commissioner, and if one doesn't wanna go, or something, or how are you doing that?
I think we stick with the commissioner part of it. I think... I think Holly does need to go to one of them. I'd like to see her go to the July one, because we need her input. She's been here longer than all of us so far, so I mean, that's our story, and we need that input. So I think, one way or another, we need to work it to where we can get her there.
See if we have it in our budget. Holly, we can visit with you about that, just to make sure, and chair and vice chair will work with her, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Lloyd, and see how we can work this out.
My challenge is between us.
Okay. Thank you. So 23 is committee reports. 2019 Commission Committee Liaison Assignments. Any questions, concerns?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I just want, I didn't get a chance to talk with Ron before this. Let me see this. Community health. Ron, on community health, I've become an actual board member instead of a liaison. They were short board members, and you had to be, and so I actually become a client, become a board member. So I use community health. So really, as an alternate, you'd be more of a liaison, if we want to keep it that way. Right now, you got me as the liaison, but, and that was a non-voting person. So I'm just letting them know as...
Is that okay, Commissioner Roskinak, that you are the liaison, and Lloyd is your alternate?
Sure.
Okay. Any other concerns? Okay. If not, let's move on to committee reports, if...
Do we have to vote on the committee assignments?
Do we have to vote on the committee assignments, Holly? No. Okay. Lloyd?
Tonight, we have a healing meeting. God, I don't want to have my notes with me. It's by Richard. He's been on Lakota Homes, Bornstein, he's done with the police department. He did the study of how to bring the community together and find healing. And today, it's at 6 o'clock at Mother Butler Center, is the third meeting that they've had. And what they're doing is looking to set goals for the committee, mission statement, and those type of things. So if you have time, it's at 6 o'clock. Mother Butler, you walk in the doors off to the right in the meeting room. They're actually going to have lunch and some other things to start out with. But be prepared, it's going to go to 9, 10 o'clock at night if you decide to go, so...
Awesome. Thank you, Commissioner LaCroy. Commissioner DeSanto?
Attended the users' board meeting, and they voted in a new chair, but he's the same chair. They voted in Carl again, Chief Police Carl Jagars. Gave a budget update. Everything looks good as far as the budget is concerned. They're going to be hiring, I believe, eight new FTEs that we had approved last year to move forward with that, to take a little pressure off of the 911 dispatchers and spread it out a little bit. Item of interest that I, when we were speaking, that we service, we show a lot of radio tech man-hours in the budget, and we're servicing over 2,500 radios and 13 tower sites to keep our communication up and running for emergency management. And there had been some questions from a couple of my constituents anyway, as to far as one particular tower that was, we did some repairs to or replaced, and it was called the Seth Bullock Tower, and everybody assumed that because it was called the Seth Bullock Tower, that it was somewhere in Lead or Deadwood. Well, that tower is actually at the fire lookout behind Pactola. It's not anywhere near Deadwood or Lead. So that might help clarify things as far as, we're not going to lead service towers in Lawrence or Mead County. So anyway, it was an interesting meeting, and that's all I have to report on that one.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner...
I forgot.
You're okay.
I'll give an update on, a little bit about the compensation committee meeting. There's been discussion about doing the new analysis and so forth, and really trying to jam that in before budget time, it's just not going to happen, because we're going to be looking at more like 2020 for that study. There's some other changes going to be coming forward that John's working on. He'll bring back in front of us. Don't really want to say until it's all finalized, because if I say something, it might be wrong. I don't want to mislead you, you know? But I just wanted to let the commission know that, you know, that was discussed in the last commission, our compensation committee meeting, and it was kind of agreed on, it's just trying to get that much work done before budget time would really be probably not the right thing to do. But moving forward, they're going to move forward with it going on to the 2020. They are looking at the commission's salary along with the other elected officials. That's something they're moving forward with, because that's something that they can do locally, you know, without going up for the bid stuff. So I just wanted to give you guys a heads up what, where they're at with that.
Commissioner LaCroy. Commissioner Roskinak, do you have anything to share?
Not today.
Commissioner Drews.
Yes, Madam Chair. I did attend yesterday the chamber invite meeting relative to the potential, or the vote that's coming up this Thursday for the chamber to become part of Elevate, which is an interesting concept of, you know, creating an umbrella of economic development. The chamber visit Rapid City, et cetera, all under this umbrella with one CEO at the top. And the chamber is going to be voting on whether to do that on Thursday morning at their regular board meeting. So it was a very informational meeting, good questions asked, and good turnout for 7 o'clock in the morning meeting.
Thank you.
I've got one other item. In the December issue of the county news from the National Association of Counties, there was a nice article in there relative to Pennington County, talking about closing the cultural gap. Gave a lot of credit to the sheriff's office, the Rapid City Police Department, to the county itself, and also talked about what Western Dakota Tech is trying to do in mentorship programs out there for that particular area, too. So it was a good article.
Nice, it was a good article. They've worked hard, the sheriff and Health and Human Services and many people, to open that building and get it through, especially a building of grounds, and took many people to get that forward, so... Mine is, the fairgrounds is still working on the expansion of Barn 8. They're trying to figure out if they're going to put Barn 8 and just put it with the new expansion, or they wanted to put it with a 60-foot buffer, but that's not really working out. So Mr. LaCroy will be working on the next step. There's some exciting things always happen at the fairgrounds. DeSanto, Commissioner DeSanto has been involved in that. The board is very good, very hardworking, and the staff. And then the fire service board is working on for future, their levy, to make sure for years to come, they are taking care of it. Mr. Roskinak, you're in there, and I'm always willing to help. So some exciting things and some good things to work on for our county. So Ms. Holly, do you have anything to share that the board would need to know today for future? Thank you. If not, let's move on to 24. Approval of the vouchers.
So move.
Move by LaCroy.
Second.
Second by Drews. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Items from the public? Y'all left. If not, 26. Do we have executive session today, Ms. Holly? Executive session would be item B, contractual penny litigation per SDCL 1-25-2-3, Crowell Discussion.
Move to go in executive session.
Second.
Is there a second?
Mark, second.
Motion by LaCroy, second by DeSanto. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Move to come out of executive session.
Yep.
Second.
Move by DeSanto, second by Commissioner LaCroy. Any discussion? If not, we'll move to number 27, adjourn.
We need to vote on coming out of executive session.
Oh, I thought we...
Aye.
I didn't think we, never mind. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, now number 27. Motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Move by LaCroy.
Second.
Second by DeSanto. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.